Authority, Councilmember, Authority Member Johnson.
Present.
Man. Smith.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Crist.
Present.
Mayor Chair Paris.
I was doing it mentally.
We have a, we have a quorum.
Uh, move to excuse, uh, Mayor Paris and, uh, Councilman Mann.
My second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. We'll call for the, uh...
Carried unanimously.
That's what I said.
For Housing Authority?
Yes.
Authority Member Harvey, present. Man. Smith.
Here.
Vice Chair Crist.
Present.
Chair Zetto. We have a quorum.
Okay, the invocation is by, uh, Dr. Tom Shepherd, Lancaster Baptist Church. Welcome.
Well, we thank you for our elected and appointed officials and the citizens here as we exercise the freedoms that you've given us in this great country. Thank you for the city of Lancaster that we can enjoy. We ask that deliberations today and the decisions would be, uh, made thoughtfully and fruitfully for this city to, uh, further, uh, our mission. And thank you for the rain that we had a week or two ago when we asked for more. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. We're gonna have our youth commission come up, all of you. This time, can we, come on up. Can we have you introduce yourselves? They're gonna do our pledge for us.
Um, I'm Creed Broadwater, and I'm on Youth Commission, and I attend Lancaster Baptist School.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeffrey Rosales, and I'm part of the Youth and Commission, and I attend Eastside High School.
And I'm Alex Canrato, and I go to Soror High School.
Please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Denise Lotanzi, are you gonna do a presentation for us?
I am.
Okay.
As you said, my name is Denise Lotanzi. I'm Executive Director of United Desert Charities in Palmdale, and I'm here tonight because we read about your Lunchbox program, and we firmly believe in supporting any program that keeps kids in the classroom and in their seats unhealthy, and your Lunchbox program is a really good example of a program that does exactly that. So I'm here tonight to give the city of Lancaster and Lancaster Community Services Foundation a $1,500 check to provide 500 meals for that program. We're quite proud of it.
What? Sure. Can I have the Youth Commission up here, please?
Good to meet you.
First of all, thank you for what you've done. Thank you for the money, but to go into the Lan- Lan- Lancaster Lunchbox, uh, it goes into a program that sends, uh, home. It's a program that's able to address child hunger, increase school attendance, improve school performance, boost self-esteem, and it sends the kids home with two items, two breakfast items, two snack items, two lunch items, one fruit cup, one vegetable cup, and two main courses. So, it's a great idea that it came up by the Youth Commission, and we thank you very much, and we would like to thank Denise for what she's done. So, thank you very much. Captain, can I have you joining up here, please? We're gonna do two presentations, uh, today, uh, one for Metroflores. Sean Rydel, could you come up, please? And one for the Antelope Valley Sheriff Boosters. Jeff Little, can you come up, please? What has taken place as the sheriff station has been, actually, the front entrance has become more customer service friendly, and by doing that, the community participated in it, and Metroflores donated the flooring for it. They did the labor. The Sheriff Boosters, uh, participated in that, so we would like to recognize them for what they've done, and we really appreciate it. So, thanks, Jeff. Thanks, Sean. You wanna give one? And I'll give one. Thank you.
Thanks. We'll see you tomorrow.
It's so good to have those community partners. Otherwise, half the stuff we do in the city of Lancaster couldn't get done because we have such a great community that steps forward.
We agree.
Okay. Are there any items to be removed?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, minutes. Uh, are there any speaker cards? No speaker cards for the, uh, council minutes? I need a motion and a second to adopt the City Council Successor Atty. Minutes?
Sumot.
Second.
Okay, let's do it all. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, consent calendar?
A motion that we approve the consent calendar as comprised.
We do have to pull CC2 and CC5.
A motion that we approve the consent calendar with the removal of CC2 and CC5.
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Uh, Michael Reeves, CC2, CC5.
Vice Mayor Chris, council, staff, ladies and gentlemen, um, I wanna speak about two things tonight. CC2 is the check register, and I noticed that, uh, we're gonna pay $38,188.64 to the animal care facility for housing cost. Um, something that I thought about, and I wish the city would think about, is banning the sale of animals inside the city of Lancaster. I think this would contribute greatly to the, uh, curtailing the pet population in this city. Some other cities have done it, and we are a progressive city, and I believe that we should ban the sale of animals in this city. And if someone wants to get an animal, I assure you, they can find the animal of their choice at the animal shelter, because I worked there six years, excuse me, six months as a volunteer, and I know they have every kind of cat, dog, rabbit, horse, hamster, et cetera, that you could possibly want.
A camel.
And that would maybe diminish the cost that we have to pay to the animal care, uh, facility, uh, for the care of animals. Of course, we don't want to see the animals put down. The other thing I'd like to speak about tonight is CC5, and we've discussed this before, and you've heard me say it to you, I'm sure you don't wanna hear it again, but we continually spend money, get grants, raise money for the homeless and shelter program in the city of Lancaster. I think, I really believe that we should make a concerted effort to partner with a mission down below and let them handle the program for our city. Uh, according to the, uh, the Valley Press, we spent, um, $24,000 to, to house some people over at the fairgrounds. Um, so, that money could have been used for a shelter program in the city. Instead of diverting, uh, money to shelter people at the fairgrounds and then to shelter people at the shelter, we could have a permanent partnered healthcare, uh, homeless shelter here in Lancaster, and I really believe that we should make a concerted effort, reach out, see if we could get a mission to handle the program for us. Otherwise, we're gonna keep going through this forever, and I don't think, in lieu of the problems that Palmdale's having in their city government right now, that we can partner with them because there's so much static going on in their city government. Any, any idea of partnering with Lanc- uh, excuse me, with Palmdale at this point is moot until they get their city government straightened out. So let's go out on our own and see if we can get someone to partner with us on our shelter. Thank you.
Mr. Reeves, if I may, uh, first of all, I applaud you for coming up and always expressing your opinions. We appreciate that very much. However, the homeless is something very near and dear to our heart, and we've been working very hard as council to make sure that our residents here in Antelope Valley are able to stay alive. In the weather that we receive here, we have homeless people that literally die, and it is our duty to make sure that we keep them safe and the children. It is our duty to make sure that we support and are there for our veterans who are also homeless. It is our duty as citizens who live here in this community to make sure that we all support each other, no matter what your financial status or your personal status may be. And so, to hear you say that we should partner up with someone outside of our community, that is not what we are known for. We are known for doing what we need to do for us, the citizens of Antelope Valley, and we are proud to partner up with the city of Lancaster, because this is a problem with Antelope Valley, not just the city of Lancaster. But again, I applaud you for always expressing your opinion, but please understand that this is near and dear to our heart, and we are committed to supporting and being there, not just for homeless, but for all citizens of Antelope Valley.
Well, I beg to differ with your assertions. Uh, we don't know what we're doing. We continue spending money, and it's not getting resolved. Why not try something different that won't, uh, have us trying to raise money and get grants all the time? Why don't we take care of this problem with partnering with people who know the problem?
Mr. Reeves, again, I applaud you, if I may. I'm speaking now.
Thank you, Michael.
I applaud you for speaking, and how, and I am offended that you say we don't know what we're doing, but thank you.
David Paul.
Mr. Vice Mayor and Council, good evening. I filled out a card for this item because I knew there'd be some talk. Um, you know, it's election season, and I really get tired of people who don't know what they're talking about, speaking. Uh, I applaud you all for what you do. I understand what this problem involves. It's an intractable nationwide problem that's not gonna get any better, and I know you all do the best you can. Steve Baker from Grace Resources, everybody that puts in their time to help solve this problem is doing everything they can, and I just want yous to know that those that know what you're doing appreciate what you're doing. So, thank you for that, and keep up the good work.
Thank you, David. I need a motion and a second for CC2, CC5.
Sumot.
Second. We have a motion, second, let's vote. Motion passes three zero. Okay. Mr. Cottle. The PUC, the infamous PUC.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Council. Um, before you today is Resolution 14-11, um, asking the PUC to support an effective, long-term, um, strategy of rate setting that continues to incentivize solar generation and solar, um, integration to not only residential customers, but business customers as well. As you know, the CPUC has been giving authority to set rates locally, so this is a state organization that sets rates statewide as relates to the public, uh, uh, independently or, um, investor-owned utilities specifically. Um, oftentimes, when we go to those rate-setting, those rate-setting processes, we have little to say. Um, today is our opportunity to say something, and, uh, we are asking the City Council to take a stand on behalf of your citizens, um, those people who have already installed solar, and say, please, continue to represent and support solar initiatives. Um, this is important because recently, they have not necessarily supported the installation or the integration of solar as it relates to a specific, a rate increase of 74% on the demand charges on large business users. Um, I must note the correction in our staff report as well. There is no specific rate identified in the staff report, but nonetheless, the, the rate specifically is a 74% increase on those large customers who have, who have installed solar.
Did we find out why?
Um, there's, there's a, a couple of different explanations, um, one of which is that those, those systems that are connected to the grid, there is a base cost associated with the management and operation of the grid, um, and when people remove their demand from the grid, it impacts everybody paying into the system, right? There's not as many paying, people paying into the system to manage the base level of the grid. Um, and that's a summation of that, but that's a lot of the discussion as it relates to the integration of, of, uh, decentralized solar or, um, uh, solar on rooftops. And what it is, is you end up having people who win and people who lose, right? Um, the PUC has taken a position historically to say, we need to protect the people who lose in balancing this rate structure. Uh, this is obviously a continuing debate as solar becomes more cost-effective, as solar integration becomes, uh, more integrated, um, and it just becomes more difficult for the citizen to engage, and I think, uh, Vice Mayor Chris, you specifically have a, not necessarily with regard to electricity rates, but a, but a relationship with the CPUC, that same relationship we hold with all of our residents in the electrical, in the electrical process. Um, the resolution today specifically states that the city will be, uh, declaring its support to the Vote Solar Initiative, to petition the California Public Utilities Commission, urging the PUC to allow customers to install solar under the current program and to continue under current net metering rules for at least 30 years. The importance of that message is that these systems will last 30 years. Um, they have a proven track record to generate electricity for 30 years. The expectation on the customer is that when they install these systems, that they receive the benefit for a long period of time, at least for the length of the life of the system. Um, and in some cases, the life of the system that they're paying for over a period of time. Um, the message is, is being sent out on behalf of the citizens, but I would also encourage the council to, uh, you know, to rec staff to get this message out to all the citizens to also participate in the Vote Solar Initiative, to tell the PUC that solar is important to us, right? Those people who are on the frontier of changing the way they, their lifestyle is and changing the way their home is, um, should be benefited for that service, not penalized for that service. Um, with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions, um, that you may have, but with that, I'd, uh, recommend that you approve Resolution 14-11.
Diane, I see you're out there in the audience. Did you find out any information for us?
Um, regarding what topic? The 74% increase?
Yes.
Yes, Diane, I met with Jason and...
Can you come up here and tell us all?
If it's been lengthy, I prefer not to do that. Your staff has all the information.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
Okay. I need a motion to adopt the Resolution 14-11.
Sumot.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, let's vote. Motion passes unanimously. Three zero. NB2, Lancaster Corporate Challenge. Who's doing that? Beverly?
Vice Mayor, members of the council. Two years ago, the city's Employee Wellness Committee created the Lancaster Corporate Challenge as a way to promote team-building, fitness, and fun in the workplace, and we invited local organizations to join us in a series of friendly competitions. The first year, we held seven events, and we had attendance exceeding 260 people. This year, we kicked off the challenge with a 5K Run Walk last month, and we have a short clip to show you.
Thank you guys all for coming. We really appreciate everyone coming out here for the second annual Corporate Challenge, Lancaster Corporate Challenge. Give you guys a hand for signing up. Well, this is the opening ceremonies and the first event of the Lancaster Corporate Challenge. This is our second year doing it. We've doubled the teams and doubled the number of events. Today, we're at the 5K Run. We had some really good times. We had probably about four or five hundred runners. Weather's great. Wonderful time to come out.
Well, this year's challenge offers something for everyone. We have 15 events this year, ranging from Texas Hold'em for those who prefer mental exercise to a triathlon for the more physically inclined. We're also going to repeat the Fit to Draw contest for schools, and we're adding a photography contest. Two of our activities will directly benefit the community. The food items collected from the scavenger hunt will be donated to the Lunchbox program, and teams can earn additional points by participating in a blood drive during the challenge period. We have 14, um, we have 14 teams competing this year, and they comprise more than 450 individuals, and we have a variety of organizations. Our events take place during non-work hours, and they're coordinated by city employees who volunteer their time. This year's event coordinators are Terry Garner, Bob Gonzalez, Danine Davina, Ray Hunt, Nicole Jones, Aroxy Karamanian, Justin Pattonanen, Jocelyn Swain, Meg Treglia, who is also our coordinator for the, the challenge as a whole, and Melissa Varela. We encourage the local organizations that participate in the challenge to host an event. And this year's facilitators are the High Desert Runners, Periclee High School, Eastside High School, and the Lancaster Photography Association. The High Desert Runners were our partners for the 5K Run Walk. While we charge participants to, um, engage in the, in the events, the fees don't cover the total cost, and we depend on sponsors. Our sponsors for this year are AV Hospital, Kaiser Permanente, Advance Printing, and these three sponsors were also with us during our first year, and they're joined this year by AMR. Their donations allow us to keep our fees reasonable. We also depend on in-kind sponsors. Big Rock Springs, Georgia's Cleaners, and Berkshire Hathaway help provide support for the 5K Run Walk. Closing ceremonies this year will be at Lancaster City Park on June 7th, and the coveted Lancaster Corporate Challenge Cup will be awarded to the team with the most points. If anyone's interested in more information about the challenge, they can find it on our website, and I'll answer any questions you may have.
Who won last week?
Who? Of course, who does we know won last week? Which event?
5K. Oh, the 5K.
The 5K. We actually had runners in both the men's and women's division. Um, city of Lancaster won in the men's division. Justin Pattonanen is incredibly fast, and, um, Berkshire Hathaway, all, won in the women's division.
Wonderful.
Those are the two that I can recall of hand.
Great. Thank you very much.
It's nice to hear we've doubled the numbers, too. That's great.
Okay, we're gonna receive and file that. We're gonna move on. We have an update for the Los Angeles County Air Show. Mark, who's doing that? Rhonda?
Rhonda, Lee, and Kelvin. So you get three people. Oh, boy.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. I'm here before you tonight to give you our final update on the LA County Air Show occurring March 21st and 22nd, which is next weekend. We're really excited about this air show. It's coming together beautifully, um, anticipating some great weather and about 75,000 attendees on Friday and Saturday combined. Um, specifically, the city of Lancaster's role in this air show is that it will be taking place or you'll be entering on city streets. So, we took control of the traffic plan. That was a collaboration, um, between the county, the city, traffic engineers, Mark, CHP, and sheriff to make sure that we can get people in, uh, as efficiently as possible. We've all probably been to the Edwards Air Show in the past, and we know that, you know, coming into an air show takes some time, so we ask everybody to have patience, but we are anticipating large crowds, and we will get everybody in as efficiently as possible. Um, after the, after getting people to the air show, that's really where the city steps back, and we turn it over to the 501(c)(3), and that is a collaboration between, um, private board members, the county, a little bit of the city of Lancaster, and the city of Palmdale. Um, but parking and through the gates, that's really all of the LA County Air Show Board and their executive director, Dennis Dunbar. Um, and this event really would not happen without that collaboration, which you were speaking about earlier. Um, really, we, relationships have, have made this air show a possibility. So, um, we're really pleased, uh, that we were able to get our contribution to be in-kind and within our existing budget, um, and, like I said, it's really more the traffic plan and, um, some sponsorships that we've received, um, and I would like to actually turn it over to Lee to give you a public safety update.
Um, thank goodness for Captain Nelson and his staff and working collectively with, uh, other agencies. We actually have a partnership that's been formed between the Sheriff's Department, the Department of Corrections, this California Highway Patrol, and then it, the resource management is being funded by, uh, a collaborative effort between the city of Palmdale, the city of Lancaster, and LA County, so, um, which is great because we, you know, it's a shared cost for resources that already exist within our agencies that are gonna provide that security, and it's substantial for this event based on the number of people that we're looking at and the size of the venue. So we've come up with a very good operations plan from, um, for both days at the event with a huge contingent of volunteers, sheriff explorers, um, and our, uh, good contingent of our Reserve Forces Bureau, too, as well. So it's gonna be a heck of an event, and for us local kids that grew up here, we all know how, it's been several years since we've had an air show in our area, and, uh, so we're pretty excited about it, and I think part of that volunteer effort has been the eagerness to participate in an event like that and actually be part of an air show. So I think it's gonna be a good thing for us.
Uh, some of the details are still being finalized. Everyone will receive their packets and all their information on where to arrive and how to arrive in the upcoming days. Um, this is really a quick event. This went from 14 months to four months in the planning process when we found out we could get the Blue Angels, so I appreciate everyone's patience in that process, um, and, but it also has, um, developed, like I said before, some really great relationships, and another one that has, um, come to fruition with, between the LA County Air Show and Destination Lancaster. We're really proud of the, uh, partnership that they have created, and I'd like to introduce Kelvin to talk a little bit about that.
Thank you, Rhonda. So what I just handed out to you are these hotel key cards, and what, uh, Destination Lancaster is doing is sponsoring part of the air show and with some of the marketing to get people to come out from outside of the region to, um, come to the air show with the intent of, um, having the overnight stays to the hotels. Um, one of the ideas is that we have some built-in customer base here, the folks that go to, um, Edwards Air Force Base or Plan 42 that are here on from Monday to Thursday on contracts. Um, the idea is if, and they, these are out now in the hotels, so as they're getting these hotel keys to come in through their Monday through Friday, um, stays, the idea is that they see that the, the air show is on March 21st and 22nd, they take a look at and say, hey, we should be staying the extra night on Fri- uh, Friday night, Saturday night, um, because it's really a built-in customer base that are, are interest, very interested in the aerospace and the air show that comes, um, around. The hotels are also, uh, offering, um, hotel packages. Um, they've got a VIP section at, at the air show, so you can book a room at the hotel, um, get a discount, um, admission price in there, uh, go to the VIP, um, section there, um, be treated as a VIP, um, get front row seats. There's also a shuttle bus that will be taken in, uh, free of charge, too, there from the hotels, um, so that's kind of the packed deal that Destination Lancaster and the hotels are, are providing to that. So we encourage people to go to the destinationlancaster.com website, book hotel rooms through our, um, our participating hotels, and, uh, we're, we're proud to participate in, in the air show event and bringing more people into the Antelope Valley.
some of the marketing to get people to come out from outside of the region, to come to the air show with the intent of having the overnight stays to the hotels. One of the ideas is that we have some built-in customer base here, the folks that go to Edwards Air Force Base or Plan Forty-Two that are here on from Monday to Thursday on contracts. The idea is if, and these are out now in the hotels, so as they're getting these hotel keys to come in through their Monday through Friday stays, the idea is that they see that the, the air show is on March twenty-first and twenty-second, they take a look at it and say, hey, we should be staying the extra night on Friday, Friday night, Saturday night, because it's really a built-in customer base that are, are very interested in the aerospace and the air show that comes around. The hotels are also offering hotel packages. They've got a VIP section at the air show, so you can book a room at the hotel, get a discount admission price in there, go to the VIP section there, be treated as a VIP, get front row seats. There's also a shuttle bus that will be taken free of charge, too, there from the hotels. So that's kind of the packed deal that Destination Lancaster and the hotels are providing to that. So we encourage people to go to the destinationlancaster.com website, book hotel rooms through our, our participating hotels, and we're, we're proud to participate in, in the air show event and bringing more people into the Antelope Valley.
Thanks, Kelvin. And just to speak to your question that you had last time, Vice Mayor Chris, we have involved AVA QMD, the executive director Brett Banks, involved him in the conversation regarding the parking lots and how they will be treated and cared for post-event to ensure that there's no dust in the future. And he is comfortable with the process that the vendor is suggesting to use on that parking lot. So just to sum it all up, I hope everybody's excited as we are, everybody's excited as my son, who asks me about it every single day.
Cute.
Seeing it through the eyes of a child, I think, is gonna be pretty amazing. So we encourage everybody to come out. It's gonna be a great experience.
My understanding is when they blade the, the parking lots, they're not gonna blade the material completely down to the ground. They're gonna mow it if possible?
Right. It's, it's a process called scrubbing instead of blading, so there will be a little bit left on the ground.
And then they'll spray the dirt that's there?
Right. So it will be sprayed with water for the weekend of the event, and then it will be treated with something that I, rhino snot. I apologize that I have to say that publicly.
Is that really the name?
That is the name, and it will, it will basically put a crust on the ground so that it will not blow in the future.
Wow.
And that will be done after the event.
We'll promote that.
And that's all courtesy of Mark Norris and California Compaction, so, and he's doing all of that in kind, so that's pretty amazing.
Well, thank him for his rhino snot.
He's great.
Okay.
This is a great idea. I love this. This is very creatively done, very thinking outside the box. This is really, really good. I know all of us who travel often and go to, you know, rooms and get our keys, we always look at them. This is really, really a good idea. Applause to whoever thought of it.
Thank you. That's with Destination Lancaster Board and the, the folks that work with them. Thank you very much.
Very nicely done. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Maria Pazano? Just for the record, that, all the other cards that you turned in, we've already done all the consent calendar stuff, so.
You have?
Yeah. So you have three minutes.
Here we go. Yeah, right. Now I have three minutes. You know, I was gonna, now I'm just gonna talk on that, because, you know, that was part of what I was going to say about how, you know, it's difficult to come up here when there's so many issues and so many things going on, to have three minutes to be able to, like, talk about these things, you know, that's happening. I mean, you know, there's lots of problems, like even with the air shows and things like that, you know, what's going on in the, not just the air, but what's going on in the ground as well. But, you know, and if anybody can see out here what happens in the sky just about every night, with the clouds and stuff that come around, and the way people drive around here same time, you know, and they see those, same thing that happens. Um, the, and for the air show, I think a lot of it is just for marketing tourism and things like that, where it's all about just showing off the, the, the different aircrafts that we have and the technology and things like that to go along with it. And, you know, the targeting capabilities and things like that, the missile systems. Because a lot of that's happening to, I believe what's going on with, you know, a lot of the accidents and stuff that happen here in town. A lot of it's just testing and things like that that are happening. We're gonna test it out on the people, you know, and see what happens. It's not as fun for me anymore, especially when I see the kids playing video games and stuff all the time. It has to do with that, with the, all the air show things, with the planes and the, you know, going in and, you know, wiping out countries and, you know, using their little Game Boy things, you know. So we have the kids doing it now. And they're being the pilots, and they're the ones that are, you know, doing it not even knowing. But like I said, there's a lot of issues, and I'm having a hard time dealing with all of it myself, because so many people are, like, involved in this situation and involved in what's going on, that it's hard to get anybody to do anything about it. A lot of people know what's going on. But, because, you know, they need to live, and they need to pay their bills, and, you know, things like that, it gets them on that side, which I think is even just as bad to coerce people into things like that, and kids. Because it's hard to bring them back from that. And a lot of this needs to stop, you know. A lot of us are sick, kids are sick. The whole, you know, mind thing, why people have mental health, all the manipulation and stuff that goes on, how they control people's lives and things, and it's, um, I wish I could have more time to talk about these things.
Maria, you have another, uh, counsel.
My voice right now, too, you know, I was out here driving and spraying out in the fields and, you know, with my grandchildren, and, you know, we're all sick now.
Okay. Thank you. You do have another card in for your non-agendised, so thank you. We're gonna receive and file the update. Thank you very much, Rhonda. You guys did a great job. CR1, Mr. Mann's not here, but Michael, you'd like to speak?
Vice Mayor Chris, council staff, ladies and gentlemen. I think you missed one of my speaker cards, Vice Mayor. I was gonna speak on the solar. Do you have it up here?
Okay. Okay, I wanted to speak about the sanitation district. I'm sorry that the city's representative, Councilman Mann, who's also chair of the local sanitation district that we're belong to, is not here, because I, I thought that the sanitation district was gonna make some modifications on either the formula for allocating the fees they charge us or refunding the fees. You know, I have my property tax bills here. In the beginning, in two thousand nine, I paid like seventy-eight dollars for sanitation fees, and they've gone up to like three hundred and ten dollars. It's absolute, absolutely outrageous, the amount of money that they have charged, and I don't think we pursued it enough. I know that when Councilman Smith was on the sanitation district representing us, he did a good job of stopping the increase in fees, and then when we changed people on the sanitation board and put Councilman Mann on there, sanitation people came up and said, well, we have to do this and do that because of the bonds, okay, and then they raised the rates for everybody, that a lot of people can't pay their property taxes now. And then Councilman Mann said that they were gonna make modifications, and that seemed to have gone with the wind. This is an important thing. The city has let this go through and not realizing the impact it has on the citizens of this community. And we had a lady come up, a man come up and speak about this before, that this is really a horrible thing to have your, your property tax bill increase like this when you are underwater. So the city ought to have the representative from the county come and speak before the council and see if there's gonna be some kind of modification or refund to the taxpayers of this city for the sanitation district. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Mr. Reeves, do you go to the sanitation district meetings?
You mean sewer?
No, the sanitation district meetings. There's no sewer district. Do you go to the sanitation district meetings?
Well, not in this case. I don't know what you specifically are saying. Yeah, I mean, the LA County.
Well, I was asking you, because you come here every time talking about the sanitation district.
Correct.
Right? We have one representative.
Right.
So if you want to get to everybody, do you go to the county supervisors' meeting and talk about the sanitation district? Do you go to the City of Palmdale and talk to the sanitation district? Or do you go to the actual sanitation district meeting and talk to them about it? Because we're only one vote. There's two other votes. So I think to be more efficient and effective, you should maybe go to the sanitation district meetings and talk to the board, because they're the ones who make the action. Councilman Mann, or when I was on it, is only one vote. Okay? Michael Antonovich, Gloria Molina, Aziv Leroslawski, whoever else is sitting on the board, or Jim Ledford, or, you know, any of the other people are sitting on the board also. So you always come and talk to us about it, but maybe I should suggest you actually go to the meeting and talk to them about it, because they're the ones that are voting. We don't vote here on that.
Right, but we have a representative that's supposed to represent the City of Lancaster on that board.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I think we do a good job.
That's the person I come to. I don't start with.
But you complain all the time about what the sanitation district's doing, go to their meeting, too.
Well, you can, you're gonna get, that's the problem. We did things the way they wanted to do it, not the way we wanted to do it.
Well, that's because we're one vote, and there's two other votes.
Yeah, well, we could've made it a protest or something. We didn't. We went along with it.
There's only one vote. They have two votes. So you gotta get those other two votes.
Michael, thank you. No action on the Lancaster Housing Authority, no action on the Finance Authority, no action on the Power Authority, the Successor Agency, City Manager.
Just one announcement. As you remember, the council gave authority and directed staff and funded the Vista Program for the upcoming year. They are going to, they were developing a volunteer program database and such, and I'm proud to say that they have gotten to a milestone where they have their website, they have everything ready, and we have a press conference scheduled, I think, next week to announce their work, and I hope you'll all be able to attend, and we'll make sure the media's invited to. It's very exciting, and they put a lot of work into it.
Mr. Wazigan, where are we at with the Calvet Home Project that we're working on?
I'd like to have Deputy City Manager Cottle. He's been working with Elizabeth Brubaker, our Housing and Neighbor Revitalization Department, and I think he has some exciting news.
Yes, sir. Per your direction, we've been working with Calvet, which is a statewide veterans' organization specifically tailored towards housing and housing affordability. We've been working with Calvet to try to develop a program for our Housing Authority to implement with regard to a number of vacant lots that we have, actually the construction of new homes and the placement of veterans in those homes in some level of affordability in partnership with Calvet, who provides the lending and who provides down payment assistance, and it's just a comprehensive program for veterans to get into housing. We're currently working on a press release to announce that partnership, and there'll be forthcoming agreements and details as it relates to that program to the council shortly.
Exciting.
Great. Thank you very much. City Clerk?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for you to address the City Council on any items that are not on the agenda. You'll find speaker cards at the back of the council chambers. We ask that you fill them out completely and print as clearly as possible, so that if the City Manager, the City Council, and staff need to get in touch with you, they will have your accurate information. As much as we appreciate your request to make comments before your three minutes begin, please remember your time begins when your name is announced. When you approach the podium, you'll see three lights. You'll have three minutes. The green light comes on when your time begins, the yellow light comes on when you have thirty seconds remaining, and the red light comes on when your time is up. We ask you to be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. Following this procedure will allow for a smooth and timely process for the meeting. State law prohibits the City Council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the City Manager. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna try and pack as much as I can into this one subject here. I noticed on the, on the agenda, there was the, I'm just gonna use this to talk about it, so that I can kind of follow something here and talk, without getting off track, with the City of Lancaster, with the homeless shelters and things like that. It says that they're to provide administrative services for the homeless shelter or through the Community Development Block Grant, built on by community volunteers. The community volunteers, you know, this started like two thousand three, went on in two thousand five, where, you know, there was the bonds from the schools with the, with the housing. They're bringing in a lot of people. The schools were just crazy, filled with, you know, a lot of the kids that had come here from other places and stuff. Those, those kids then were let to run loose around our neighborhoods and things, and a lot of them had, didn't have homes and stuff. So what they did was, is they let those kids come in, and it's basically a spying type thing, where they'd come into your home and they'd find out everything about your, your home. You know, run off with your kids, get your kids into thinking that, you know, this is what they need to do, you know, get your, make your parents, like, responsible, you know, for things that you do, and so we can come in, take your homes, take your kids. You know, taking care of homeless people is fine, and I'm not, there's, there's difference between, you know, homeless people that have been displaced with homes and aren't out there causing any trouble, they, you know, they're just having to go and do what they have to do or whatever because of some of these same problems that they've had to put up with. You know, being attacked, being, you know, losing, like, you know, everything that they have when they're not even doing anything wrong, you know. These are clients of the city, okay? So, um, and a lot of it also is through the releasing of prisoners and things like that. So I think I have a, the report from that Department of Justice, they go, I'd like to talk about that one, too. Now that got twisted around. But, um, here, where is it? This whole thing, the programs that lets inmates turn their lives around, you know, you gotta, they go along with the program or whatever to come in and do these things. They get paid for it, and then it says afterwards they get permanent housing and cars and, you know, money and everything, which I, I don't know, I hear, you know, you guys are kind of upset about that whole thing with the Department of Justice, and they're getting a dime out of some kind of extortion thing going on or whatever, gonna tell everybody, you know, what the situation was with that. You're allowed to go in and live in these vacant houses, and like I said, I mean, I went to jail for all this because I was trying to protect my kids, and, you know, I lost my job at the school, everything. We lost our home, then they started taking my kids from me, saying that Nana was, you know, where I was living. Oh, boy. These things from the Muni Services about taxes and stuff, too. You know, there's so many different ways to be able to take your property, but, you know, losing your children and stuff, getting beat up, having people come in and steal from me, you know, give them the backpacks and let them, you know, run around the neighborhoods. While you're saying crime is down now, probably because it, maybe it is a little bit, you know, because then there was a lot of crime, but nobody was doing anything about it, you know.
Thank you, Maria.
And, yeah.
Judy Cooperberg? Congratulations.
Thank you. My name is Judy Cooperberg. I'm Executive Director of Mental Health America. I also serve on the LA County Mental Health Commission, and I want to talk a little bit about homeless issues, homeless services. We've been administering a, a program serving people who are homeless and mentally ill for eighteen years, and that's through LASSA. And we, we also started the Homeless Solutions Access Center. We managed that program for five years, which served all homeless populations. And for the last two and a half years, we've been serving homeless veteran families and at-risk-of-homeless veterans and their families. So I take exception to what Mr. Reeves said about not having providers in the Antelope Valley who know what they're doing around homeless issues. There are certainly several providers here, and I, I want to express my appreciation for the council members who have been attending the Homeless Coalition for the last few months, and Marco Ziegian for coming this last time. It's really important that the whole community is represented at the Homeless Coalition. We've been meeting for twenty years. We've been working vigilantly to address the homeless issues in the Antelope Valley. We've made some huge differences here. I'm very proud of my colleagues in the other agencies who've been working very hard. Valley Oasis, Domestic Violence Council, Grace Resource Center, other agencies who've also been working. So it's not a matter of not having people here who know what they're doing. It's a matter of getting the resources, the funding sources here in our community. We would be happy to provide more services if we had more funding. One of the things I'm concerned about in particular is the suggestion of breaking off from LASSA, the city making their own application to HUD for funding. That is gonna open a huge Pandora's Box of problems. Having had a contract with LASSA for many years, I'm familiar with the intricacies of doing this kind of service and also about the continuum of care. It's not that easy to put together a continuum of care in a community. It's not that easy to put together a continuum of care in a community. Our fear is that it will put our funding at risk, and not only the loss of funding, but the funds that we get because of our loss of funding, which is about a half a million dollars. And combined, we're bringing in over a million dollars of funding and housing resources to the Antelope Valley. So my request is that before the issue is pursued in applying separately as a city to HUD, that you sit down with the agencies that have contracts already with LASSA, talk about what the repercussions would be, how it would affect this... All the agencies and this community, and really open that dialogue on a one-to-one. Thank you.
Judy, let me go through a few things. So first of all, thank you for what you guys do. We couldn't do a lot of the things in the city that you and Diane and Steve and everybody do, and so we thank you very much. What we're trying to do is lend the voice of the city. We have 12% of the homeless, we have 2% of the funding. I know that you guys have been beating your heads against the doors. What we're trying to do is open those doors and make sure that the City of Lancaster gets on the radar. I'm looking at what they recognize, okay? They recognize 18 different services in the Antelope Valley. 17 of those are in Lancaster. So you're doing everything possible. We don't want to put any of your funding in jeopardy. What we want to do is open the door so you have the funding that's necessary for you guys to do the proper job. You're being funded for 100 people, you're serving 500 people. You're just underfunded, and we recognize that, and we applaud you for what you guys do. But again, all we're trying to do is open those doors for you, and if they won't do it, my understanding at the LASSA meeting is there is no new federal money coming in. It's already been allocated to the different spas. The different spas have been allocated their money. If they don't use that resources, then that money's put back into a pot, and then the pot will be reallocated, and we might get some at that time. And it doesn't look to me like there's going to be any changes in the near future. So we will explore all avenues in which to try to get you more money, but we will not jeopardize, and we will talk with you, and we will partner with you. We do consider you guys true partners in what we're trying to accomplish. So we will not jeopardize that, but we are trying to accomplish in getting you the money that you need to do the jobs that you do so very well.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
And if I may, I think Vice Mayor said it very well, saying that we're a partnership. So please, we don't want any of the wonderful organizations that have been doing 20 years plus and continue to do for our homeless to feel that the city is going against what the future is. We want to partner up, and of course, we want to hear, you're the professional, what you feel is best. We don't want to just feel how it would jeopardize, but we also want to hear how it would benefit. There's always the positives and the negatives of anything in life, and we want to make sure that we are able to research all of it before any decision is made as a community, as partners. So we want to make sure that we're very clear that we are all communicating openly so that we make the best decision for our citizens, okay?
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, and congratulations for being LA County's Woman of the Year. Congratulations. Diane Grooms. And Diane, you are our representative.
Yes, I am. I am Diane Groom, Staffordshire Drive, and I want to thank you, Vice Mayor Crist and Sandra Johnson, Mark Bozigan, and Elizabeth Brubaker for coming to the LASSA meeting last week where you got a taste of what we've been putting up with for 20 years.
Frustration.
Yes. There's no better way to define frustration than the process, and I'm here to tell you that we have a role for the city. We have seen a dramatic change from HUD in that the dollars that are coming through LASSA from HUD are now only to be spent on permanent housing, not supportive services, not transitional housing, but true permanent housing. And this is where we have reached the capacity limit of our existing agencies. Our nonprofit agencies have formed a wonderful partnership. I have 80 names on the Antelope Valley Homeless Coalition roster that interact with me on a regular basis with different levels of information. Our health care of the homeless has dramatically risen, and that's been in large part due to the Antelope Valley Community Clinic, through Bart's Altadonna, and through some of the other programs that are around. So we have taken a huge step in that direction. The next step we need to take is housing and representation and some of the work that you can do with private developers. I think it's fair to ask LASSA that why are non-high-scoring programs still in operation? We have been asking that over and over. Our organizations perform extremely well and score very well, but our other organizations that are only getting a 25% out of 100 grading system are still being funded, and that's the question that really needs to be asked of LASSA, because we have auditors who come up here and nitpick us, but that's where we can get more money. There will always be a portion of the LASSA total dollars that we will never get, and that's the portion that the City of LA puts in, and I believe that's about half of the LASSA allocation. So we know that we can only get a certain percentage of those dollars from LASSA. Another area that you're gonna see a big difference is in the next homeless count. This last homeless count, we had a 393% increase in homeless, according to the count. Well, if you take a look at the trend data that we've seen, we had really about a 10% increase in homeless numbers. They counted with a different type of process. This next time, HUD has said you cannot use the hidden homeless or the telephone survey to find out who might be sleeping on your sofa. So this next count that happens next January, I guarantee you, will show a 200% or more drop in homeless in the Antelope Valley, and they're gonna go, "Hurrah!" Well, we have the trend data that shows what we do at the Access Center every month, what we're doing at SAVES every month, so we can give you a more accurate snapshot of what that is. So please do involve us in the Homeless Coalition. We'd love to be a partner with you and bring some of the private developers to bring some housing for our community, because we really do need that.
Thank you, Diane. Thank you for what you do.
Mrs. Grooms, may I ask a question, please? When you stated that some of these areas have a 25% out of 100%, is there a standard that needs to be met? What is that?
But they have not held the agencies to that standard.
And if I may ask, what is the standard?
I do not know what that is, because they've never defunded an agency for not performing. That's where the new money could come in. While HUD may not be giving any new money, that... Those funds need to be reallocated. There are also other agencies who don't spend all their money.
Right.
And I can guarantee you, every agency in the Antelope Valley spends every dime, but there are some agencies, they've left $3 million on the table, and that doesn't just get returned to the pot in LA County, that has to go back to HUD. So these are our tax dollars that we've paid into. We deserve to get our fair share back into our community, and we really do need your help.
Okay. Thank you.
And we'll be there for you.
Absolutely.
We're gonna continue to do what we can, and we'll add you to our partnership during our meetings. Hopefully, that you can attend some of our meetings that we're having in partnerships with LA County and with the City of Palmdale. So thank you very much. Carol Krabson. Carol, I'm sorry for not including you in the group that we're in partnership with, but I didn't see your card, and thank you for what you do also.
Well, thank you, and good evening, everybody. I echo Judy and Diane's sentiments. There's a lot on the table and a lot of things to be concerned about. Valley Oasis tends to be the secret, silent homeless service provider in the Antelope Valley. I hear it over and over that these names that do great services, and Valley Oasis actually has four programs that we operate to provide homeless services, and our numbers are the ones that really help give the meat to what is happening with homeless in the Antelope Valley through our Family Solutions Center. And we partnered with the City of Lancaster many years ago in HPRP. It was a very successful partnership, which led to Valley Oasis getting the Families Transition Program grant, and that led to us being awarded the Family Solutions Center, which, in the eyes of LA County, makes us the hub for homeless services in Spa 1. And there is a grant that's gonna be coming out that we will be also going for that will just continue that process, and we've... A lot of lessons learned. But what I want to say today is that I think that, for me, and I view things differently, and far be it, I'm never known to be politically correct, so if I offend somebody in advance, I apologize, but I think we need to look at how the counts are done. Diane talked about how the counts are gonna probably go down low because some things that gave us our count, and from Mark and Elizabeth, the people that attended the meeting I talked about, you need to look at the numbers of the people that are being served by the services up here. That'll give you an accurate count of how many homeless are in the Antelope Valley, not a count at 4:00 in the morning in the freezing cold in January. You're not gonna find our homeless out walking around. They're trying to get shelter. So I talked about a desert count, and that we need to do things differently up here because our geographic location is different, our demographics are different, everything about us is different, and it doesn't mean that we should be excluded because we're different, it means that things need to be done differently up here, and I would like you to champion that with LASSA. The other thing is LASSA's making great trends. I've been on the committee for developing the evaluation tools, and there will be changes. It's gonna take time, though. Diane mentioned a process, and everything is a process, and I do believe that LASSA's got a good handle on the things that they haven't done in the past, and I think they will be doing. But we need to be talking to our supervisor, we need to be talking to our congressman, we need to be talking to HUD, we need to be talking to the Department of Health Services to get money coming in for supportive services, and really looking at programs in our area if they are successful, because we always hear about these reports about how many people are housed, but there aren't a lot of follow-up reports on how many people stay housed, and we need to know those, too, if we're gonna be successful in what we're doing in ending homeless. So I would appreciate very much if that you contacted me as we move through this process. I would like to be able to provide my input, tell you more about my programs that the agency operates, and we would love to collaborate more often with the city in helping this problem that we all share and that we all want to end. Thank you.
Thank you. Just so you understand, Carol, that we have contacted our congressman. We've had extensive talks with Congressman McKeon in regards to this. He is looking at it. He is looking at introducing legislation to get us more funding. He is looking to introduce legislation to provide a shelter, because I did explain to him the difference in the HUD, the direction that they're going. We have over 6,900 people out there right now. We cannot build a shelter that homes 120 people. We have to do this in a fast way. So even though there is a process, we have to expedite it as best we can, because you might not like our methods sometimes, but, you know, our goal is to help you, is to get you some more money to do what you guys do, and, you know, you guys do such a great job out there, and you can see some people out there do not recognize that you guys are professionals, you are the experts, and the City of Lancaster does recognize you as that. So thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Kevin Luke. Mark, will you help him?
Hold on one second. Over there. Oh, rock and roll. ADA. Yeah, that's okay. Yeah, that's what I'm here for. I think you guys did it real good on the boulevard, and from Facebook, you get a lot of compliments. My issue is, I just recently went to the Meditradium Cafe, and the restroom is not wheelchair-accessible, and I contacted your city. They're saying it's built before 1972. Well, ADA says there are exceptions, and I don't see 1972 in it. I've got stuff here that I've contacted, and I'm gonna give you these copies here. I just don't know why the restroom... I can get through it to the back door. If you haven't been in there, it's got a counter here and there's seats. You can't go up that way in a chair, but you can go around to the back. And my concern is, are we gonna continue opening businesses that don't allow access for wheelchairs? I mean, ADA came through in 1994. America was supposed to renovate it by '97. There's still a lot of places out there, and, you know, I have that compassion that you don't want to close every place down that's not wheelchair-accessible. But they just renovated this place, and the boulevard's so beautiful, you know? So I don't know if I'm out of here. Maybe you guys can look at... That's the only answer I got. It's built before 1972, and gee, I was putting the chair in 1973, so, you know? I don't know who I give this to to get it to you guys.
You can give it to our city attorney.
Oh, city attorney. There you go.
Best of luck to you guys. My email's on there if you have some questions. I just... You can renovate that bathroom, and it should be...
Kevin, thank you for your comments. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
I'm just here to educate you again about the water, my never-ending story. Patricia Garabey hooked me up with Dwayne Chisholm at AVEC, and I... We had a little discussion. I'm going on a tour of AVEC water systems. It came down to it, though, that he was actually blaming LA County Water District 40 on the water. I said, "But you guys treat the water, you produce the water, you know, you allow the things that are in the water to go past you." And he said, "Well, we can't be responsible for what happens to the water after it goes through their system." So now he's putting it off on them, but I just wanted to update you and educate you as to what's in the water. Trihalomethanes. My research shows that it's a refrigerant solvent. It's also known as a disinfectant byproduct. The health effects are... Can be ingested, inhaled, or absorbed through your skin. Short-term exposure, abnormalities in kidneys, liver, and cardiac arrhythmias. Inhalation in high levels are toxic to the liver and secondary to the kidneys. Long-term exposure or oral exposure have resulted in adverse effects on one of the central nervous system, liver, kidneys, and heart. Respiratory disease, liver damage, decreased size of reproductive organs, liver and kidney toxicity, cancer-causing effects, oral kidney and liver tumors, drinking water increases, rectal colon, and bladder cancer, classified by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency as a B2 group and a human carcinogen. Birth and reproductive EPA has established a maximum contamination level, which is the MCL, for total THMs, triethyl... Triethyl... Triethylmethyl... Well, you know what I'm talking about. In the public drinking water, as an enforceable standard of 80 ppb, and the federal-state standard is 60 ppb. Our levels are at 80. The vanadium in the water is at NL, which is a notification level. I mean, you should notify the public when it's to this level. A byproduct of uranium is used for the catalyst in manufacturing sulfuric acid, considered toxic, considered dangerous immediately to life and health, likely to cause permanent health problems or death. Boron is at the notification level, which I didn't get any notification of any of this. I had to do all this research on my own, is very toxic, causes brain tumors, diarrhea, vomiting, mild conjunctive congestion, indigestion, dermatitis, loss of hair, anorexia, swollen brain, small gonads, testicular atrophy, thickening of the pancreas, and known Group A, B1, B2, and O carcinogen to humans. Anyways, I just thought I'd let you know. And the plane doesn't catch the people that are... This is a different subject. The plane that flies around Lancaster for the law enforcement? I would like not have him do that anymore and give it to the law enforcement individuals, maybe, for more police officers? Maybe give them a raise, because the plane doesn't do anything. I had, like, these three really questionable men in this desert next to me, which is private property. I took a picture of them, and they said, "We don't care if you call the police," which I did, and no one came. But anyways, you might consider taking the plane and giving the money to the police officers. I think so.
Thank you, Heather. David Paul.
Vice Mayor and Council, good evening again. You know, we had a wonderful event last night at the United Methodist Church, a forum. We'll have another one tomorrow. I hope I'll see Ron Smith there. That'll be excellent to have you. It's a lot of fun, you know? There's so much pain in the world, there's so many problems, but what I just witnessed between the providers... what I just witnessed between the providers and you gives me hope. You know, we work together here. I like that. That's why I like to come here and see the good things we do. There are many things that are problems that we have very little control over, and it's frustrating. But, um, I certainly appreciate the dedication and commitment to everybody who works on these problems every day and, uh, just does their best and, and keeps a stiff upper lip and all that good stuff. So, thank you. I appreciate what you do. That airshow is gonna be great. What a, what a score. Um, makes me proud to live here, and thank you. Have fun.
David, do you know that there's a reason that you're always last? Okay. We're gonna go into closed session. Are we gonna do, uh, Cal Water in closed session?
That was my intent.
Mr. Smith, do you have a problem with us doing Cal Water in open session? Let's do Cal Water in open session.
Okay. You wanna start?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, last Friday, uh, Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Mayor Christ, uh, City Manager Bozigian, and I attended a meeting together with, um, the city's, uh, Water Attorney, Doug Everts, um, with the Chief of Staff of the PUC Commissioner, who is in charge of water issues for the PUC, uh, and briefed her with regard to the issues regarding the Cal Water general rate change, uh, rate case, and, um, gave the input from the City of Lancaster's perspective and the perspective of the Cal Water, um, clients located within the City of Lancaster. And, um, she was very receptive, uh, to what we had to say, and indicated further investigation will be done on behalf of her PUC Commissioner. And she encouraged us to continue our efforts. Um, I'm sure you have more to add, Vice Mayor Christ, but that was my sense of how the meeting went.
I think that she was more shocked. So, uh, to make everyone a little clearer, Cal Water said that they were coming forth, and they wanted a 59.9% rate increase.
Which would have gone to 66% by the end of that rate case.
Correct. The City of Lancaster said that that's intolerable for our citizens, and we will not tolerate it, and we seek justice for them. We did come up with a, an arrangement with Cal Water that gave us a, for lack of a better way to put it, less than 10% rate increase. It was nine point, something, 9.8% uh, rate increase over three years. So, the City of Lancaster did its part and negotiated that, uh, rate increase over three years. The taxpayer advocates, the people that are responsible to the taxpayers to look out for their best interest, said no, that the 10% was too low, and that they should have a 44% rate increase. So, that to us was intolerable, and we are looking into that. And the, um, individual, I think she was shocked that the taxpayer advocates, this was one of the first times the taxpayer advocates has ever come in and saw that they wanted a rate increase over what has been negotiated between, uh, the two cities or the, uh, our city. So, we have represented, uh, them. We will be making other trips up there to represent them. And, uh, for all the people at Cal Water, um, we're still working on it, and we're still fighting for you. So, with that being said, we're now going to recess in closed sessions for the, discuss the matters listed on the agenda, items one through 11. Thank you.
Yes, in closed session pursuant to an agenda item number one, we discussed two potential cases in closed session. And on item number six, uh, we discussed the Palmdale versus Lancaster matter. Uh, no reportable action on any item.
Okay. So, the City Council meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, March 25th, 2014, at 5:00 PM in memory of Kyle Durico, who passed away on February 13th, 2014, after a courageous battle against cancer. Kyle's adventurous spirit and love of nature led him to partake in many outdoor activities, and his love of adventure was rivaled by the unquenchable desire to learn about the world around him. He had a positive outlook on life and was delighted in the small but beautiful details of the world. His selfishness, selflessness, courage, strength, grace will continue to be an inspiration to everyone, and our condolences go out to Lee Durico and his family at this difficult time. So, I just want to say, we did go to the services or the celebration, uh, for Kyle, and, uh, over 600 people were there, and it was, uh, very good that, that many people showed their love for the Durico family. So, it was really nice. So, we stand adjourned, uh, the Housing Authority stands adjourned, uh, March 25th, and the City Council.